Service above all things.
I know. It's special, so your peers.
Good to you. Brad, Michelle?
Yeah.
You guys okay? All right, yeah. That's how I feel, yeah. Don't take chances. I'd say, uh, you gotta take care of yourself. Yeah, absolutely.
I was planning a staff meeting in the morning, but actually not in this room. Last time I did it was in a conference room. Yeah, yeah.
They used to do them all.
Right, they can, that's right. Yeah, so it's been a few years.
Good afternoon. We are calling to order our weekly staff meeting. And before we get started, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Commission President Stephanie Somardumas. And I'm making that motion and...
Second.
Commissioner Reese? Yes, Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
All right. And we normally always make sure we have an introduction, so we'll start with that. And we'll start over here.
My name is Leslie Hervey. I'm interim clerk.
I'm Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
And I'm Commissioner Alicia Reese, Vice President of the Commission. And we'll be running the commission meeting today. Our first presentation will come from our Health Commissioner, Health Commissioner Kesterman. Welcome back. And I look forward to hearing your report, hopefully a little bit of good news.
Yeah, thank you for having me today. And sorry I missed last week. And I will say things continue to trend in the right direction, which is definitely good news. So this week, when you look at Hamilton County and number of cases, we are at 6,600 active cases of COVID-19, which is down from last week at 7,500 cases. So absolutely a big, big number of cases dropped off. Our cases per day are also continuing on the decline, as you can imagine. Today, we are at 187 cases per day. Last week, we were at 240 cases per day. And our last peak was September 16th at 419 cases per day. So already nearly halved the last peak, which is great news. Our percent positivity for Hamilton County, as well as the region, is right around 7.6% with about 2,800 tests per day. So we're continuing to see a high number of tests, which, as you've heard me say in the past, is good news because we know that people need to test to ensure that if they're sick, they're staying home and isolating appropriately. Reproductive number for Hamilton County for the last month and a half has continued to be below one. Today, we are at 0.82 for Hamilton County. And for the region, we are at 0.86. And then also, good news, we continue to see hospitalizations on the decline. Today, we have 438 individuals within our 14-county-region hospital systems, 144 in the ICU, and 111 on ventilators. And I think if you look at this chart on the right, you can actually start to see a few of the points or days kind of falling outside of the gray shaded area, which is the statistical threshold where they would expect cases to be if they stayed on the current trend. So they're actually dropping even quicker than the statistical models are showing, which is good news. That means we're starting to get our systems back to a normalcy. Right now, about 17% of our hospital patients have COVID-19, so that number continues to decline as well. ICUs are staying right on target. As you know, that's a delayed indicator, so we would expect that to stay a little bit behind. But hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll start to see that drop even at a quicker rate as well. No change with regards to those individuals within our hospital systems. We continue to see those between the ages of 50 and 79 as being the majority of our patients, the highest group being those between 60 and 69. As far as the CDC level of transmission, I keep waiting for one county in Ohio to transition back to a lower level of spread. But right now, for the time being, all of Ohio remains high spread of COVID. Here in Hamilton County, our official count is 168 cases per 100,000 of population with an official percent positivity of 8.06. Our vaccination rates, really no change over last week. We are at 70% for those over the age of 12. Our total population, when you look at it as a whole, we're at 57.65. We continue to see all age groups getting vaccinated, but it continues to be fairly slow. And then my last slide here really talks about some of the federal news. The next big announcement comes today, tomorrow. We learn a little bit more about officially what the CDC will do with the Moderna and the Janssen vaccine as far as boosters. It is anticipated that both vaccines will be eligible for boosters, but we won't know exactly how that looks until they officially rule yet tomorrow. And then finally, you've heard us talk about the 5- to 11-year-olds. The FDA meets next week on that, and we're super excited to be able to provide those vaccines. Statewide, there's been a lot of positioning of vaccine and getting folks ready for vaccinations of children and pediatrics. It's a slightly different process, a slightly different dosage, and so we're making sure everybody's ready to go as soon as we get that announcement. And then just a constant reminder, we have vaccine all over this county. We're excited to be able to provide it. So if somebody has been waiting to get their vaccine or their booster, we're ready for you. Come on in, we'll take care of you. And that's all I have prepared, but happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Health Commissioner Kesterman, for your work. Before I ask my question, I do want to just acknowledge and send prayers to General, former United States Secretary of State Colin Powell, and who is 84 years of age. And it was interesting reading some of the articles. One of them said that as he was, you know, declining, his quote was "Don't feel sorry for me." So just wanted to reiterate that. And certainly, age, other things come into effect as you're fighting off. But it's just also indication it's important to have a fighting chance to get vaccinated. I wanted to ask you a question about the children. And I talked to some folks from Children's Hospital on my radio show, and they were talking about, we have had some children that have actually died from COVID-19. And I want, could you maybe talk a little bit about that as we're going and looking at younger ages, being able to get the vaccine? And why that's important, that we're seeing children now being affected? When it first started, you didn't hear about the children. It was all seniors or adults of a certain age. But it is hitting people in an equal opportunity. It's not the equal opportunity we're looking for in this category. But it has been hitting children. Could you talk about that a little bit?
Certainly. So COVID-19, as we know, has certainly had the greatest impact from a health perspective on those over the age of 50. We've seen more individuals get sick and seriously ill from COVID-19. Throughout the pandemic, we have seen children get sick. We have seen children get seriously sick and even die, although just at a lower rate. The newer variant, the Delta variant, that's making its way through our community has certainly gotten more kids sick and more kids more seriously sick than previously, although it still remains at a lesser rate than for adults. Children also play a major role in spreading COVID-19. Often because children are asymptomatic or not showing symptoms, they're able to easily spread COVID-19 within the home environment. So kids will go to school, they'll get sick, they'll come home, and unsuspecting grandparents and parents can get sick. And as I just mentioned, typically, it's more significant because they're older. And so all of us play a role in preventing COVID-19, whether it's children or adults. And the number-one thing you'll hear me say, and especially now that we're having a vaccine that's ready for those over the age of five, get vaccinated. It's the number-one way that you can prevent getting sick and also keep your family healthy.
Thank you. And then talk about the boosters. We had a lot of people asking about Moderna, and then people, I guess I saw something on television. It doesn't mean it's correct. That's why I'm asking you as our Health Commissioner, the mixing and the matching. If you were Pfizer, can you get Moderna? Should we be mixing and matching, or where are we at with that?
So before we are allowed to make a change like that, we need to wait for the ACIP, which is the Advisory Committee of the CDC, to make their ruling. There has been a lot of talk that that might be permitted, but we won't know for sure until the ACIP meets. And that happens, I believe, tomorrow to specifically discuss the ability of providing boosters as well as mixing and matching. As it stands right now, we have to follow the label. Every pharmacy provider has to follow a label, and so we are not allowed to mix and match. So if you had Pfizer and you're coming in for your booster, which you are able to do today, we cannot give you the Moderna. But if the FDA and the CDC make that ultimate change, then mixing and matching will be permissible, and we'll look towards what they say as far as safety and recommendations on if you should do that. One more point, when you go to get your flu shot, none of us ever go in and say, "Yeah, I want this specific type of flu shot." Typically, the vaccines are fairly similar in the way they're made. This year, we have two different types of vaccines. We've got the mRNA vaccine, which is the Pfizer and the Moderna. And then we also have this other vaccine, which is the Janssen. So this is the first time that we have kind of a different type of vaccine in the mix. And so we'll really have to wait and pay attention to the science before we can make that recommendation.
Okay, that's good to know. No mixing and matching right now.
Not just yet.
Okay. Commissioner Dreehouse and I were out yesterday with the 513 relief bus on the west side. We were back home. And it was a large crowd of people and various services with the economic assistance, but also people there getting booster shots and getting shots as well. So Commissioner Dreehouse, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for being here, as always, Commissioner Kesterman. So I just want to zero in on this question about the mixing and matching. So once the committee makes a recommendation, if that's as early as tomorrow, are there any other layers that that decision-making process needs to go through before somebody like my mom, who got Moderna? You know, Moderna's booster is not available yet, so she's waiting. I've advised her not to get the Pfizer because she's not allowed to. So how much longer could it take before that decision then goes through the appropriate channels and we can actually start to talk about the mixing and matching of vaccine?
Great. So the very next steps for these vaccines, the advisory panel will meet, they'll make a decision, and then the CDC Director typically signs off on that decision the same day. At least, that's been pretty standard for the COVID pandemic. The very next step is Ohio has to make some quick adjustments. Typically, that happens within 24 hours. And then after that occurs, because I'm a provider of Ohio's vaccine, I have to wait for them to tell me how to handle that. As soon as that change occurs, then most locations will begin administering the vaccine pretty much immediately. So I would anticipate today, tomorrow being Wednesday, if they make a decision on Wednesday, as early as Thursday afternoon, us be providing booster shots for Moderna and Janssen.
Okay. All right, that's good information. Things keep changing on this front. And we were told one thing, and now it seems to be morphing into something different. So, all right, thank you. And I too want to thank you for your team being out in Westwood. There were lots and lots of people out there. A lot of them were lined up for JFS and RAN assistance, but there were also people getting their shots. So thank you again for the partnership.
Absolutely.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Also, just want to let people know that the 513 relief bus is out today. It's downtown. So anyone working downtown, it'll be out until 2:30 PM today. And then tomorrow in Sharonville from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. And then Saturday, Madisonville from 10:00 AM to 1:30. They can go to 513relief.org. And I want to thank Commissioner Kesterman because he also is providing the home test kit. I saw another county, folks were complaining because they can't get the home test kits. And that's not happening here. We have them at the libraries, we have them with our vans, our mobile vans, and with the 513 relief bus at no charge. So I want to thank you for that. Okay, moving to our calendar. Our next item is Solid Waste Rule Making Subcommittee, Michelle Balls? Is that it?
Balls, yes.
Balls, who's our Solid Waste Manager. And also Commissioner Dreehouse is on the committee, one of the voting members, as well as our Health Commissioner Kesterman is on there as well, who is with us. So, welcome.
Thank you. So I am Michelle Balls, Hamilton County Resource. We were formerly the Hamilton County Recycling and Solid Waste District. We just went through a rebranding. And I'm going to talk a little bit about solid waste rules and the Subcommittee that our Policy Committee recently formed. But before I dive too much into that, I want to give a little bit of background into what we do. So solid waste districts were formed in the late 80s, and they, every county in Ohio has to have a solid waste district or be part of a solid waste district. There are 52 in Ohio. And our function is solid waste planning. So we make sure that we have enough landfill capacity for the next 15 years. We make sure we're going to meet mandated diversion goals. So much of our work has to do with helping the 48 communities in our district with recycling, their curbside and drop-off programs, and yard waste programs. We also do a lot of technical assistance and supply giving to businesses. We work with schools and do education programs. So we have a lot going on. And we also have direct collection programs for house hazardous waste and yard trimmings. So, but today, I'm mostly going to be focusing on our rules. So the Solid Waste Policy Subcommittee, this is a committee that is very closely prescribed by Ohio Revised Code as to who should be on the committee. And four of the members, the Commissioner, the Health District Township, and Municipality rep are all appointed by those various organizations. Then we have some members, like our public member and our general interest member, who are, who apply, put in applications, and we interview. So we have voting members, and then we have two non-voting members. One is a student representative, a high school student, and the other is a person from Rumke. So at our last Policy Committee meeting in September, we did, the Policy Committee formed a Subcommittee of three members to look into the issue of rules. And so we recently, in the last year, have received a lot of questions and from townships and from the general public about changes that Rumke made or is making at Bon Road Landfill in Whitewater Township. And so out of that has come this question of should Hamilton County have rules? So let me explain a little bit about that. So this is an excerpt from our solid waste plan that started in 2018. This is the current approved plan. And basically, I don't expect you to read all that. Basically, it says that we are not setting any rules at this time, but we reserve the right. We don't waive the right to make rules. So we reserve the right to make rules. And just to be clear, our Board of Directors is actually the Board of County Commissioners, the three commissioners. Our Policy Committee is under the Board of Directors. So it's actually the Board of Directors who make the solid waste rules and the Policy Committee who would recommend those rules. So this is an excerpt from Ohio EPA's plan format. So this is how we write our plan. But I think it's a really good, more concise than the Ohio Revised Code of what the four areas that solid waste districts in Ohio are allowed to make rules on. And the first one is prohibiting or limiting the receipt of waste generated outside of the solid waste district. This one actually has the most information in Ohio Revised Code explaining why you would do this and how you would go about it. And really, this is reserved for if we were in a situation where we did not have enough landfill capacity. We could limit even a private landfill from taking waste from outside of Hamilton County. We are not in that situation. We have enough landfill capacity even without considering Rumke's sanitary landfill, all the landfills around us. So that does not apply to us. The second would be governing the maintenance, protection, and use of solid waste collection, transfer, disposal, or resource recovery facilities. So this is the one, my next slide talks a little bit more about what that means. It's basically reviewing plans for solid waste facilities that want to expand or begin in Hamilton County. Then the last two, one is governing a program to inspect out-of-state waste. And then the other is that we could overrule a local zoning requirement, so a township or city's zoning, to say, "Yes, you can build a landfill there." You have to remember that these were written in the late 80s when landfill capacity was a real issue in Ohio. And so that is why those exist and why solid waste districts were given that authority. So just to explain the one rule that might apply to us, I highlighted here, so really it is, this is just a small clip of the Ohio Revised Code, but really, it's looking at if, say, a solid waste facility wanted to expand or wanted to build a landfill or a yard trimming, composting facility, any kind of solid waste facility, we could set up a rule that Hamilton County, and it specifically says the Board of Directors, but we would set up a process where some Hamilton County staff would review those plans before they were approved. So right now, Ohio EPA reviews and approves those plans, but this, but if we put in a rule, we could say we have, we also want to review those plans before they are permitted. So at the last Policy Committee, like I said, they set aside a Subcommittee, which is the three members on the right, so Tony DiPuccio, Bob Gedert, and Sue Magnus. And so those are the Subcommittee members. We also put together a group of Hamilton County employees mostly, but then we also have a resident to provide perspective, to answer questions, to be supporting staff for those Subcommittee members. And so they will start the discussion on solid waste rules for Hamilton County. And we have the first meeting coming up this Friday, and it is a public meeting. And we will certainly, once we have minutes from that and notes, we will provide those to the Commission and administrative staff. So any questions?
Thank you for this presentation. Can you go back to the slide, Ohio Revised Code, Section 343.01? Can we go over that again? Because I know I am still new on this component, and we hear a lot, and they say we've got so much power. But if you were to read to this, it would say that we, tell us, what power do we have with this?
Well, that's one of the things that the Committee is going to look into and then also request legal advice on, because we've been advised by Ohio EPA that these rules have not really been tested legally and that we would need to make sure that, we would want to see what kind of risk we were getting into. So that would be a question for the legal counsel. But really, what most rules say is that in addition to submitting plans to Ohio EPA, you have to submit your plans to Hamilton County for review, for if you were expanding a landfill, if you were building a new landfill, or whatever solid waste facility we decided we wanted these rules to apply to.
Yeah. Now, I just think we do need to get, because if I'm reading this exactly how it's saying, it's making it seem like I know it's a dot, dot, dot before you got to the actual words, but it's giving the impression under the Ohio Revised Code that we would have the authority. It doesn't say if we decide not to go with the expansion of a landfill or what have you. But if you just read this paragraph, anybody watching at home, they'll say, "Oh, wow. This gives us the power." And we've been saying we don't have the power. So I'm very interested in hearing what the legal interpretation, I guess lawyers can always interpret things differently. I don't know what the courts have said. So very interested in that. And you're saying that this Friday, there will be an open meeting to anyone that wants to attend? Will it be on by Zoom if people can't physically come?
We have it on right now, just in our office. We weren't planning on doing it on Zoom, but we could, we could see how, if we could set that up.
Yes, I would think we need to be by Zoom. People aren't showing up, you know, in person. And we're trying to keep people sometimes not showing up in person, just so no one can come back and say, "I didn't get a chance. I didn't have an opportunity."
That's a great idea.
With something of, you know, this importance. But I want to turn it over to Commissioner Dreehouse, who's on the board, on the committee, to take it from here.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Yeah, so I'm, actually, I chaired the meeting for the first time, the last meeting, so I too am fairly new. Todd Portoun used to sit on this and thoroughly enjoyed his time of service on this group. So as has been stated, this all bubbled up because we are getting concerns related to the Rumke landfill up in Whitewater Township. And so we've been visited by groups like OXPO. Carrie Davis has come before the Commission a number of times, expressing some interest in this. And I think that the thinking was that we do need to get some clarity, not only on what we as a commission are allowed to weigh in on, or what kind of authority we have, but also it's relative to the request that's being made. So what kind of request is being made by Rumke? And in turn, how can we respond to that request and get involved and represent the interest of the constituents related to that? So I think that is the reason for the Subcommittee. We set this up at the last meeting. The Subcommittee is, consists of members of the larger group, but we recognized that we needed to have some experts at the table, especially attorneys. You have members from public health are sitting there, and the engineers' office, because there's a nexus there, they're also sitting there. We've got, we've expanded it now to say that we need community members as part of that advisory group. They are also sitting there. And so the idea will be that the Subcommittee thoroughly looks at this, investigates it, tries to figure out what the rulemaking ability is, and then, and as it applies to different kind of requests from Rumke. And then the Subcommittee reports, and the public meetings are open to the public, that Subcommittee then reports to the larger policy group. And that policy group then will recommend to the Board of County Commissioners. So it's kind of a stair-step process. But I do think it's important to really dig in, especially with legal counsel. And there's, I don't know if Michael will be there. Nifong is there. She's the legal counsel to the solid waste policy group. And so she's got the expertise in this area, so she'll be there advising as well. So I'm looking forward to having the Subcommittee dig in, get some clarity here, so that we have a better understanding of how we can move forward as a board. So thank you for your work on this. I thank the three individuals that stepped up and said that they would be on the Subcommittee, and then all the other experts that will be sitting at the table as well. So looking forward to this getting going. And I know we don't have a timeline necessarily for recommendations, but hopefully, it won't be too long before we start to have some recommendations come out of the Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before you go, can we put on that slide again, the date, the time, the people who are on there, so they know? And then I do think at some point, as a board, maybe through the administration, that we do need to get some timeline, because every week, we're hearing that we're moving too slow, or we missed the deadline. I don't want anyone to feel as though we're slow-walking something, and then we get a rule that says we can have some power. And then we say, "Oh, but if we just hadn't known it 30 days ago, you could have did something. You missed the deadline." So if there's any deadlines or timelines that we have to be sensitive to, of course, we wouldn't know because, you know, we're not in the committee or on the Subcommittee. But I'd like for us to be informed if there's anything coming up that would, could be affected by this rulemaking process, that we were aware of it so that we, as a board, can make a determination if we need to have something on a calendar or a deadline or something, so that we don't miss any potential deadlines and people, you know, then begin to lose faith in us. And then my last thing would be that if it is an open meeting, that it be provided with the technology and maybe getting with Bridget from our team, make sure it's on our page. And we want it to be open, we want to be transparent, so no one can come back and say, "Oh, you guys were doing..." Because we, all of us were saying, "Let's be open with this." We understand this is very important for people who live around this area to them. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just had a, Commissioner Dreehouse, do you have any, this was our last presentation, do you have any comments or anything else?
Nope.
Just wanted to also talk about the, we got something regarding, they say we have over 1,700 people who have registered for our hazardous product drop-off day. It is this Saturday, because I had some people contact our office. It's this Saturday. You still can sign up, but you got to do it by 12:00 noon, 12:00 noon. And you can go to our website, our regular website. Which one is?
Yeah, they can get there through Hamilton County's general website or directly to the solid waste management district's website, which, Michelle, what is the direct website?
that it be provided with the technology and maybe getting with Bridget from our team, make sure it's on our page. And we want it to be open, we want to be transparent, so no one can come back and say, "Oh, you guys were doing," because we, all of us were saying, "Let's be open with this." We understand this is very important for people who live around this area to them. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just had a, Commissioner Drehouse, do you have any? This was our last presentation. Do you have any comments or anything else?
Nope.
Just wanted to also talk about the, we got something regarding, they say we have over 1,700 people who have registered for our hazardous product drop-off day. It is this Saturday, because I had some people contact our office. It's this Saturday. You still can sign up, but you got to do it by 12:00 noon, 12:00 noon. And you can go to our website, our regular website. Which one is?
Yeah, they can get there through Hamilton County's general website or directly to the solid waste management district's website, which, what, Michelle, what is the direct website?
We need this on 513.
Our website's hamiltoncountyresource.org, but we just.
Say it one more time.
Hamiltoncountyresource.org, but we just an hour ago filled up.
We filled, oh, my goodness.
We closed registration. I'm so sorry.
They just told me we were going to Friday.
But people can get on there and sign up to receive emails for our house of hazardous products drop-off. And I would highly recommend that, so that you get the email first and you can get signed up next year.
Okay, all right.
Let's just follow up on that. So how often do you have these?
We've just been having them once a year, but if we get more interest and we get a lot of people, then we could have them more, more times.
Yeah, that seems to make sense if, you know.
I think so.
We're going to hit a wedding list. So anyway, we'll leave it to you, but maybe we do it more than once a year. Yep.
Yeah, maybe a waitlist or something, then you can decide a new date. Thank you for that. And then lastly, just want to say, Thursday, we are, we're going pink for breast cancer awareness. So if you're a survivor or you're walking in the walk or what have you, you're welcome to come down and join us. We'll have a pre-reception at noon with photos with some survivors. And then at 1:00, the Commission, Board of Commission will have resolution acknowledging this day. So that's this Thursday. And just wanted to give people time, if you'd like to come and join us, or you could join us virtually and watch us on Facebook or YouTube. All right, I have a motion to close the meeting out.
Second?
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.